We'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I was trying to give people some time.
Trustee Paulie.
Yeah.
Trustee Lafferty. Clerk Clavitch here. Treasurer Ellery Summers here. Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. We're at the point of uh the adoption of the agenda uh under new business number eight will be pulled. For this meetings alone. Are there any other corrections substitutions?
You're moving it to four is it?
No, it will be pulled from the completely to be brought to a subsequent meeting.
Okay.
With that amendment, are there any others? If not, I've entertained a motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
So move.
I have a motion on the table, is there support?
Or.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. This is the first opportunity for public comment, this public comment is relative to business on the agenda. If there's any public comment, please stand in the podium and state your name for the record. It's to this agenda. I allow the first time you're not on the agenda, so at this point in time, public comment would be reserved to South Bay to the subsequent uh public comment.
You're just saying the last, at the end.
At the end. The first public comment is pertinent to the agenda. I allowed the the atypical arrangement and the previous budget hearing uh agenda, but. Your comments towards South Bay could be for the second public comment, that is. Uh is there any public comment online? Seeing none? And seeing none in person, uh is there a a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Or anything that needs to be pulled for further discussion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion on the table to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Uh we'll call please.
Clerk Clavitch, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lafferty.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. And this is atypical for our agenda cycles, uh but we do have closed session before old business due to some time constraints. Uh so at this mo- point in time, I've entertained a motion to go into closed session.
That the township board to enter close session to the fault with the township attorney regarding trial strategy in the water and sewer rate litigation pending before the Alpine County Circuit Court. Pursuant to FBL one five dot two six eight one E.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, trustee Lafferty with the support. Rule call please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Trustee Lafferty.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes, supervisor Skibby.
Yes. We're officially in close. Okay, we are back in uh open session, are we online, ready to go? Uh we are at a old business in our agenda. Uh the item of old business is the adoption of ordinance one fifty-two zoning ordinance amendment. And I would, can I need to see this?
Yep, that's what it's.
Uh I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance one fifty-two, but without the provisions related to solar energy that appeared in the original version of the ordinance. Is there a motion to that effect?
No, make a motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Please support it.
I trust you pulling. So. The movement's supported. Further discussion, yeah, we have the the red line uh as asked to be to this board as it was presented originally, and then behind it uh the clean version. Yes, trustee Paulie.
Will the planning commission or people that have uh manuals get updates with colored versions?
Denise always adds it right in.
She's very good. All right, okay.
Uh with that discussion being had, uh any other discussion over ordinance one four uh fifty-two amendments? Not rule call please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Paulie.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes, treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Sorry, who made the motion, who second?
Uh the the motion was made by trustee Crawl and supported by trustee Paulie.
Thank you.
Uh moving on to new business, um and then the first item of new business is half of a tree, which is a uh emergency service consulting. This was discussed going through the budget sessions. Um and at this point in time, I it has no leeway for a clarification, uh in twenty twenty-one we utilize. An individual that did a synopsis of the fire department, it was not a study. Um and this is to put together uh an RFP. Uh and so the parameters therein uh within the packet are several different organizations uh that work on these kind of activities. Um and I guess I looked at this board um for direction as to formulating an RFP. My thoughts are to have uh not only our uh department head, but this board put together parameters of. What options would be look like and what are uh within the attachment that uh. Treasurer Ellery Summers put, there's some questionnaires, what do we want a potential consultant to do? How do we want to frame it? Because this board needs to be extremely clear of what those expectations are uh before we finalize an RFP. Um so at this point in time.
I guess I need a little more clarification of what we're. So the RFP would be. To put out for a consultant. And they would give us. Different models of fire departments. Different.
Utilize a third-party professional consulting service.
It would just pretty much be open to give us all sorts of ideas. We're not saying, oh, here are the five options, we'll let you to analyze them.
There may be options we've never even considered.
That's what I want to make sure there could be options out there we've never considered that might be the most beneficial to us.
And then per the Township Focus Magazine of February twenty twenty-three, uh page one is. This exact conversation. Uh of. What's happening in the emergency services in Michigan, and Michigan's not a rarity in regards to uh. Recruitment, training, managing, retention, um it's the same same list of issues uh that this board faced over two years ago. Uh and so. If we can't um finalize a a way forward, why not have a professional uh consultant? Help steer the ship, so to speak. Um so I guess at this point in time, there's really uh. No other action other than boards submitting what they think or their options are, um and then reaching out to to companies. Um and that'd be through an RFP. Because as you see in the packet, uh I did reach out by email to one company early on, I did not consist. Uh or continue any conversation, because. One thing that has been noted is that. The more conversation you have, it's already the cursory sets a framework, and it's not my intent or nor do I think it's the board's intent. Uh to allude to one option or any other option in preference. But to have an independent professional consultant uh give us what would fit for our community. So with that being said, uh are there any questions, discussion?
So we don't even know what it would cost.
We don't, uh we'd have to put together, uh and that's, yeah.
I mean, we we could get. Do the RFP, put it out there and get costs that everybody wants two hundred thousand to do it, and we know we couldn't afford that. So.
I just have a hard time because we do have a split board and we. I think the problem is we don't have a direction, we we don't have, everybody can yield into one direction and there's, so how do you know where you're going?
Well, and that's that's the exact reason of why we need to get out of our own way. And allow somebody that works in this department and those fields and not to belittle what the strategies that we have in house. But you're to your exact one. Uh we've had a division on the board. Um but the reality is. How how do we congeal, how do we move forward? And so it's it's not the most ideal, but at the same time, it's a direction forward.
That's kind of the same reason that they had the rate study in the OASD.
Yeah.
You know, discussions.
Uh trustee Paulie.
You know, first of all, we don't know what we want or what we want to do. Um. I think of when we. Hired our labor attorney. We put the word out that uh we wanted somebody that could do some workforce in that category. They came up, proposed us what their credentials were, what they possibly could do. That might build us on something where we could, we don't even know what to ask for for an RFP. Um we need somebody to give us guidance on maybe what we need to ask for for an RFP. Well, we got too many things that are going on with the fire department and the board. That it has to somehow come together, but we just can't be asking a bunch of questions that we don't even know what to ask. We need to put something together that will allow us to get. Somebody to give us guidance, you you have these things and you want these things. Now let's go for an RFP and see if we can find out what we really want.
Um I just wanna ma- just make a comment, um I was sitting, I did, when I was sitting on the fire committee. Um supervisor Skibby sent out an email to the fire committee asking us if we could provide. Some options for consultants, I reached out to my Michigan Municipal Traders Association. And that's where I came up with. The contact person that I that I had, um I was asked to do something and I did. I mean, I'm still in full support of rebuilding our fire department, I just want to make that clear, um but. If this is an option for us to do and getting a consultant. Again, like, we don't know how much it's gonna cost, I also like the idea of um Mr. Johnson's idea about having a facilitator. I mean, what would that look like versus having a consultant?
And that could be just as the. Language, I made the same note, I thought that was.
I mean, and that might be a lot less expensive too, but we don't know until we put this together and put it out.
And I think we're more on the same page than than we think we are. It's probably just the difference of how we get there. I don't think we're, it's that far apart.
But how do we get all together cash?
Right, I don't know.
The part of the congenial aspect is working through this together, because we have different points of view. Um. My only point of view is, I'm not set in one particular uh venue. Except for providing our residents the best services that we can with the millages that we collect in doing so. Now that's not saying that even within this budget, we're at a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars out of general fund. But staying in the same format and not making any changes isn't a sound way forward, knowing that we still have all the same. Concerns, and so. Uh I think the bridge building opportunity is having, whether it's a facilitator or a consultant, working with us as a board. And. Showing showcasing basically our our similarities more than the differences of point of view.
Within the means that we have.
And and.
We just passed a budget that's not gonna get us. To support this fire department as it stands even. For a full year, we're probably gonna run out of this budget. For the fire department. Within six to nine months, they're probably more like seven or eight.
Well, and like we've all said, it's a living document, so changes can be made to the budget.
Well, if you can find money to change something in that budget. Good luck.
So. So to that point, uh it's it's. How how do we, and that's my ask of this board, is to bring your opinions for. Put together and utilize other professionals to sharpen that uh. Laura's group actually had a bunch of questions of how to start the RFP process. Um and so I looked at this board uh to move forward with putting together an RP, RFP to bring back uh for further discussion. And submissions.
I don't know that your RFP needs to be really very detailed, they just need to. Put out a general parameter of what we need to get. Across the bridge. You know, this is, this is where we're at, this is. Where the. Ideas have been. And then what other ideas and what I, and of those ideas, what what should we be focusing on doing as a solution?
Yes.
My concern about setting on an RFP. Doesn't our RFP have, what is our goal in sending out an RFP? What like, do we want to? Get out of this RFP?
And that's the precursor reaction that we as a board, what what are our parameters? We all have to be in inner a- alignment.
And we have to have some general direction, because there's no way to narrow that into an RFP and then who's gonna build that RFP and. You know what I mean, so there's.
So I feel like maybe the more I'm thinking about it while I'm sitting at this table, it's like more work needs to be done before we. Even send out an RFP.
Oh, I think that's still would downstream a considerable amount, I mean, I think that we'll probably be back to the board with. And I.
So what are what are we doing here today, is it just like, are we looking for a motion? For someone to start writing an RFP and then it comes back and we all review it and go, oh, I like this, don't like that, this is too restrictive. Is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
Could this be a starting point of the frequently asked questions, you know? You know, what is driving the request for the fire department, you know, what's current staffing models? I mean, if we could answer these, put our answers in the spot, I mean, that might narrow down exactly more of what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
That's why I was included in the the board bracket, I mean. But trustee Paul, did, are you done?
Yeah.
No, I didn't have it.
Oh, I'm sorry. So that was, that was the intent of starting the conversation, because. Sitting and just continuing not working together as a board is not an option either.
Cause.
And so.
Did you get to look at this yet, uh or probably in your packet, but I mean, I think this would be a good thing for Mark to look at.
Yeah. Look at the frequently asked questions and.
Kinda get their input and.
I will direct you if I'm allowed to. I have looked at that for sure.
Oh, right now, or if you'd like.
I have, I have looked at that in very detail, and uh Mr. Johnson, I I actually addressed you folks earlier today. Uh he asked permission to do that through me um as a concerned citizen. And I think rather than putting a bunch of time and effort and money, especially what we don't have in this township, or that's what we're. We're looking at. Uh having some sort of a mediator come in to talk, get all groups together, the union. Management, you know, that would be us uh and the union and sit down and actually talk about it. And find out what's really the deal, because you guys continue to ask me for a plan. Just like Markham said, you want to go on a trip, but you don't know where you want to go, I can't give a plan if I don't know the destination. So getting everybody, everybody in that same room under a mediator would probably be the way to go.
I kinda like that idea.
Well, I mean, we've been eighteen months without a mediator and we still sit here. So I think, I think that 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 the direction they're in is, yeah, I think everybody could answer that FAQ sheet. And I think you you start formulating, whether it's a facilitator, whether it's a consulting service. Right now, we have one option that would not be burdensome to our budget, and those are some ARPA monies that would be. This would be one of those functions. I don't know, I'm looking to this board because we do need to start working together.
Uh the RFP doesn't cost us anything, I think.
No, that would just be compiling everybody's position and looking and bringing it back and saying, is this a framework, is this meet everybody's expectation?
And and I like the concept of facilitation. Uh you know, that can, that could help. Help us as a board. Uh but we've been kicking the can down the road, as I said at another meeting, I hate to keep repeating that. And we're not doing anything about it, so uh. Whatever it takes, whether it takes a consultant to come in and look at options, somebody that's an expert in. In in the field of of options, we know what our budget is. And the budget ain't. I mean, we know what the money coming in for the millages, let me put it that way. And and we keep. Seeding it with other monies, that we can't afford to seed it with, we're not, somebody's talked about a CIP. We can't even fund a CIP if we keep doing this, so we gotta start thinking about. Problems that are gonna crop up in front of us. Luckily, we had ARPA money, that that's almost gone, we're not gonna have that anymore. So I said it before, I said it again, um and so. We gotta keep, quit saying, well, what do we do, where do we go, we gotta start going somewhere. Until I got.
And I think it goes farther than just the fire department, I mean. We always talk about what we want to do, but we never actually have a plan to get there and and the current millages don't support it. It just doesn't, there's no money there, we can build all the CIP plans we want, but there's no dollars to put in those buckets. So at some point, the people need to decide what they want to do. Do you want to pay more, have more services or not? So.
Well, and and that's. That's, we've already discovered part of that, now is that to answer and to be all sale, no. But we've crossed that bridge a couple times, so I guess to to get to trustee Reiner's point is. Starting somewhere to start. And so that's what I look for, for all members of this board to compile their parameters, going through the FAQ would be a good start. Okay, so.
So would, in the facilitator. Question. Would the facilitator have to be someone associated with? The fire department world or just a facilitator to be like a mediator between the two?
Well, obviously, you know, qualified, you'd want somebody that knows what they're talking about, this is pretty, emergency services is very site-specific. So why wouldn't you want to pull?
No, I'm just asking. Maybe we need a facilitator just with our board to get us talking.
And that.
The fire department.
And and that's probably.
I mean, maybe that's where we need to start with, so there's not such a divide on the board.
Couldn't disagree with that.
Cause maybe that facilitator then could lead into an RFP to. Actually have something else.
So that that would be my ask, is to compile, fill out that the FAQs for for Chief Hanson to do the same. Compile them, get them to me, and then we can bring it to the next board meeting and say, here's what's been compiled. This is, these are the options of discussion, these are the parameters. We need to start moving in any direction, right?
And that was provided through Laura, what she provided is from MTA.
Yeah, well, that was.
They're just gonna be just. Not individual answers, some are just gonna be facts.
So.
Right, like, you know, what is the budget? I mean, right, it's a run, I have different.
Might be the budget to cash, and here can I, and what might be to Nathan, might be two different things. He might have an extra two hundred and fifty thousand added from the general, Nathan's might not.
Or whatever.
Right, so I guess what everybody thinks is the budget could be listed here too.
So. That's kind of where this conversation needed to start.
And maybe think about who would be a good facilitator that has knowledge of a player, of player department background.
Well, maybe one of these companies offers a facility.
They they offer all kinds of services, I didn't want to even start any conversations with, I mean, there was one through the International Chiefs Association. That sponsored, so obviously, these are people in the know, and they have a plethora of services available. And so. Here's, here's what we're looking at. Tell us wh- which direction we're going and start, start a conversation, started as a board. Because I think through that process to get to clerk Clavitch's point is. It'll be a growing process for us all. And honestly, and try to get us back to a centered. My end goal is, how do we provide the best services to our residents? In the means, because we've, we've pushed one mill, it maybe that was too, I don't know what it looks like.
And I think every one of us sitting on the board would say that is our goal, is to provide the best service to our residents.
That's a common denominator.
Within, but also provide.
The but.
The best. Be be appropriately handling their tax money too.
I agree with that.
Continue.
Well, my train of thought. I will let it, let it go.
Right, that was something. So to that end, we could, we could discuss us, the the time of the is of the essence. And so I guess, yes, I I do look for a motion to start compiling data to bring back to the board. And whether it's a consultant, a facilitator, a moderator, there's, if you looked in, I'm sure everybody went through all the trees in their board packet. And the services that are in that be, some of these companies provide. Just starting, once we get that together and then actually reaching out and saying in a standardized form, these are some of our topics of discussion. And they might have the ability to say, this is a service that would be best for your community.
So do we need a motion or just everybody look at those?
No, I would like a motion, because then it's, we know that we're taking action, we're moving.
So what is the exact motion?
To start, the data come, basically, a motion to start data uh gathering uh for.
But what data are you gathering, are you just gathering our opinions?
Okay, that's, that would be a good point, a lot of it's fact-based, I mean, like that FAQ sets. We know, we know our limitations, our revenue sources, our population, our geographics, those are known. Non-changing aspects.
I mean, I could.
And some of these questions don't even pertain to us, this is specific, like where does the nine-minute response time?
But maybe you could put some of your goals or what you expect.
And and I would expect.
As a service, stuff like that.
Starting that, if you want me to.
So would it be better if somebody typed out the questions and sent them out to everybody?
So that we, I could do that as well, we could keep it clean, that way.
Yeah, so. Right, yeah, so we're all have the same template.
Yeah. You might, you might reach out to a mediator for just that, to start off with.
Yeah, and maybe.
Mr. Johnson may know somebody, he definitely does not want to be involved with it, because.
Well, as a, as a, as a township employee, it would be in his best interest.
But he knows somebody that could help us get to that point.
There's no reason to recreate the wheel, yes.
No.
Whatever you come up with, some kind of a form or letter or whatever, but we all have the same thing that we're with, and we'll come back with answering or. Come up with some ideas of, that we're all looking at the same type of thing that we can bring back to this board, give us a deadline to return.
I'm just wondering if this Anthony. Maggio, I think that's how you say his name for my, my group. Um.
I put it.
Maggio, I mean, maybe he would even zoom in and. Give some tips.
We don't know what we don't.
No, I just mean at no charge, just to kind of give us a little nudge, a ten-minute thing or so.
And I would just like the tip of the hat of this board to start that process, compiling data, putting together a template. Reaching out to potential uh. Facilitators or moderators that can help tune that template, so that we can start working together as a board. And find a direction.
I would make the motion, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a multifaceted.
You just kind of, kind of detailed the parameters of it though.
I have to start data gathering, complete, compile a template.
And to initially reach out to professionals in the industry, something as generic as that. That way we can reach out to moderators, I can talk with other staff members that may know of other people.
But at this point, you need something that from each of us as word message.
Yeah, and I'll get, that would be where the template comes, and then I can get that to you probably, I would hope, but before the end of the week. And so we can all have the same template. And start working on it. And go from there, you okay, Ms. Birmingham?
Yeah.
Okay.
And she would also.
Yeah, by all means, I mean, we have resources and helps that we need to be all encompassing and find what's gonna be best for our community.
I mean, wondering about the s- the staff, the fire department staff too. Firefighters, or does it get too big? Sir, right now, we gotta get this board together, and I would like to just start with getting our board on the same page. Before we start putting in more personalities and thoughts.
And to, and to that, chief is the department. His staff can go to him and they can populate that, you can listen to them, and then he can bring, there's the bottleneck that comes back to the board.
That's what it's supposed to be.
Yeah. So. Would somebody like to make the convoluted motion as to start the data gathering, or you did, sorry, trustee Reiner?
I'll, I'll make the motion if you can word it, Michelle.
I have it, start data gathering, um compile a template and initially reach out to professionals.
Something as generic as that.
And that uh the board members commit to uh. Having a response to the supervisor within one week after we received his.
Board members and. Board members and chief.
Yeah, board members and chief.
So we have a motion on the table. Is there support?
So just return template within.
Like two weeks.
Like two.
Cash already submitted his template. He's always.
Of the of the four allies, I think you're the only one that's still working full time.
With ten days.
Two business weeks.
Worked ten days.
It's still gonna be before our next meeting, so I don't see why to.
Well, we are gonna be calling a special meeting.
Well, not the special one, but our next regular one.
How about ten days?
Can you do ten days, Cash?
Sure.
So there's a motion on the table with a resubmission timeline. Is there support to the motion?
I'll support it.
Been moved and supported.
So is it ten days or two weeks?
Ten days.
Ten days. We gotta cut it not. We'll just spell it two business weeks.
Are you gonna do a voice call or do you wanna do a call?
Are we down with discussion? There's, yeah, if there's any other discussion.
Norm had his hand up and I don't know if.
And this, the sun's starting to.
I know it's.
Beautiful, but it's at that time. Um, is there any other discussion? Saying, uh, at this point in time, I don't anticipate any expenditure. So voice what all those in favor of moving forward with the motion and clarification to the motion just in its rough shape?
Just start data gathering, compile a template and initially reach out to professionals. Um, with the board of trustees returning the template within ten days of receiving it.
Okay. We have motion and support for the discussion.
Hey, so I think myself more work.
Oh.
That was part of the original.
Yes, I'm adding him.
Okay, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Yeah, moving forward to new business number two, uh, the training and recruitment grant purchase amendment.
Good evening, Jim Stackowitz, um, firefighter paramedic. I'm also the training officer for the fire department. In December of twenty twenty-two, at a special board meeting, the board of trustees approved purchase of training supplies. Uh, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and four cents. Received from the state of Michigan as a reimbursement grant to the state or to the fire department. Uh, this amount was after utilizing one thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty cents to purchase the Lexible online training. At that time. Uh, you were given a list of supplies and items that we were. Willing or looking to purchase and the initial motion or the original motion. To purchase the items was. Uh, stipulated as presented. Uh, due to some unavailability of two of the items. Uh, that freed up a considerable amount of monies. Uh, that we're able to look at other avenues and other training items. Um, in consultation with supervisors Gibby, Chief Hanson and Mister Fink from the state of Michigan, who kind of oversees the grant process. Uh, we went ahead and purchased several other items, uh, including. A. Laser extinguisher training prop, a ceiling training prop, hemorrhage control trainer, a gabled barn to be utilized as storage for all of the training supplies. Uh, the building permits, uh, bag valve masks and renewing the Lexible online training for another year. So these purchases totaled forty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-nine cents, which left three hundred and sixteen dollars, fifty-seven cents out of the original. Uh, forty-one thousand, five ninety-seven, thirty-six. What we're looking for from the board, since the original motion stipulated as presented for the item, the original items. We're looking for either a new motion or an amendment to that motion to. Read just to purchase items not to exceed the forty-one thousand, five ninety-seven, thirty-six.
Yes, but so our motion would be to just update the items purchased to the list.
Correct.
As presented.
Correct.
Or not to exceed, right?
I I think we better to put not to exceed the forty-one thousand, five ninety-seven, thirty-six. That leaves it open that. The items we were getting. Yes, the we've already purchased them and. Uh, we've received all but two of the items at this point. Well, we need, because the original motion stated as presented to that original list. We have to. Get an amendment or change or a new motion to utilize the monies for the new items.
To be able to draw on the grant.
Correct. To be able to get the reimbursement.
Two questions. One for you, Jim, is is all of this stuff usable in training with our, with what we do?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, it's all I need to hear. There there, it's a combination of medical supplies. Um, the CPR mannequins that we have. Um, innovation, airway heads.
The CPR mannequins were in the first one, but.
They were.
Okay.
They were, but there there was two items, the gas meter prop and the pilot module. Were initially on the initial one, they were unavailable to us, so that freed up. Considerable amount of monies that we're able to purchase other items. Um, and the storage shed.
And I have a question on that, but I'll ask two questions to be on that. So you you're saying you could use them all in training and it'll be.
It's utilized for for our in-house training, uh, the fire academy. We if if. Somebody from the department is instructing for the fire academy, we can utilize it for that. Um, our continuing education, medical training, we can utilize all these items for.
And the and the shed itself will be a cold storage shed?
Be a cold storage and it will will store all of our our training props and it'd be secure.
Question on that supervisor. The size of the shed, I thought exceeded our. Our. Ordinance for waiver of a building permit. Does this have to be then on a on on a?
No, it actually, uh, it was twelve by twenty, uh, and part of the the grant, uh, paid for the building permit as we always do as a municipality. We apply ourselves, uh, applicable to the same rules and regulations.
It have to be on on foundations, what I'm asking.
No, it does not.
It's it is actually. Cause I have a twelve by sixteen and that you don't have to get a building permit. So we're getting a building permit, but.
We got a building permit.
But the same thing is, but it is, it can be sitting on the ground just like any other.
It's on a gravel pad.
Yeah, gravel pad.
It is on a gravel pad.
We already have it.
Yeah, the gravel pad was already existing. We utilize that.
So it's no different than. What a smaller one, but they just have to have a building grid.
Yeah, after, uh, ten by twenty, I believe is the what?
Twelve by sixteen.
Two hundred square foot is the threshold for a building permit. So.
Right.
Uh, through those conversations, uh, we identified that and we as a municipality pulled a permit for that, the same as any resident within the township would be.
So I have.
Yeah, and we got authorization from the state of Michigan to purchase the building, to use monies to pay for the building permit. Uh, and I have the emails from that. Those will be included with the reimbursement requests. Uh, like I said, the only thing we haven't received yet is the forcible entry door, which when I ordered it, we were told we were seventeen plus weeks out because it's in high demand right now. And a hemorrhage training prop that is on backlog. All the rest of the items we have received.
So at this point in time, uh, to encapsulate, um, Mister Stack with presentation as to the first responder grant is I'd entertain a motion, uh, to move forward with. Uh, the not to exceed forty-one thousand. Two hundred.
Five ninety-seven, thirty-six.
Yep, exactly.
And with the with the modified list.
With the the modified that was presented.
So we'll.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported for their discussion.
So.
Laura supported a motion by.
Just Ryan, okay.
Uh, seeing no further discussion, roll call please.
Not to exceed forty-one thousand with the modified list.
Correct.
I know it was to amend the original motion from twelve fourteen, twenty-two.
And clerk Clavich is forty-one, five ninety-seven, thirty-six is what not to exceed.
Five ninety-seven, thirty-six.
Correct.
Yeah. To amend original motion.
Uh, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
But Clavich, yes, treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Corl.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Uh, next item of this, thank you.
Thank you. If anybody wants to see those items or see any of the training items, let me know and I will take you out and show you.
Is the shed over on this side?
The shed is over here on what used to be the water ball court. Uh, we're utilizing the gravel pad that was already existing for that, that helped to save some money and time.
Great, thank you.
Uh, Chief Hanson, you didn't present the the next.
Actually, uh, Mister Waterson, um, he wasn't gonna be here, but, uh. So let me get to that real quick.
You want me to read it?
If you would, yeah.
Uh, so the memo, uh, for Lieutenant Waterson, he'd like to, uh, like to receive approval to proceed with the application of the triple A traffic safety grant. This grant does allow up for a fifteen thousand dollar reward. Uh, in this grant application will be applying for extracation type equipment such as auto cribbing and vehicle stabilization and spreading rams. If awarded, this grant requires a ten percent match would come from GL two oh five, three, three, six, nine, seven, four, zero, zero, zero. Uh, and the equipment for the upcoming budget fiscal of twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, and I can actually add to that, uh, I. Reviewed, uh, the grant with Lieutenant Waterson, um. And he had a great foundation, uh, gave him some some sharpening points and. Uh, this is the the ask for the, um, extrication, uh, portion of that is married to the new jaws, uh, so that would be, uh. Dual purpose. We already have the the base models of the jaws, so these are attachments. Uh, the cribbing obviously is just that cribbing. Um, but replacing, um. The equipment that's decades old at this point, so. So if there be a motion to, they'll allow Lieutenant Waterson to proceed, uh, with submission of the triple A traffic safety grant.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table and support by, uh, Ellery Summers, uh, further discussion. Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Clerk Clavich, yes, treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Corl.
Yes.
Trustee Ryan.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes.
And real quick, I'd just like to thank Training Officer Stackowitz and Lieutenant Waterson. For working on this big project for both of them. Uh, Jim is especially a big project, keeping all that together. So I think they did a great job.
Excellent.
Moving forward in the agenda is the Alpena County Road Commission Dust Control Agreement. This is up, uh, slightly from the, uh, dust control, uh, agreement of last fiscal, I believe, two thousand dollars. I'm just throwing it. I think it was thirty-one thousand. Um, the. Brine solution went up, um. I think six cents of the amount or six cents per thousand. So that's the principal reason, um, that this has, uh, increasing cost. Uh, but this is, uh, part of our road agreement, uh, with the the county road commission. So at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with. Uh, the dust control agreement, uh, for all of our, uh, local road systems, uh, to be treated, uh, specifically with, uh, solution and brine.
Make that motion.
Uh, motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported for the discussion.
I just would mention one thing and I don't know. Do you live on? Yeah, okay. Well, I I'd be interested because one citizen has approached me and said that. It's a waste of our time and money.
I agree with that person.
Okay.
Are you the person?
I'm not. That you're lucky to get maybe two weeks and it's one thin little strip down the middle of your road.
And it said, if it doesn't, and this person said, if it doesn't rain, if it rains, it's all over with and gone and no help, just makes it through with money.
Yeah. Are there any other options other than brine?
I think it's move on.
Live on a paved road or.
Yeah.
Put oil, use motor oil down.
We use.
I think it.
That's a no-no. That's a no-no.
No, um, and at this point in time, I mean, uh, outside of the, uh, the traditional brine or chloride solutions. And there's no perfect volley. The.
But I think it needs to be done more than. Once in June and think it's gonna be good for the whole summer.
We could ask to have a secondary dust control agreement brought forward to this board.
Which I'll pass.
Which.
Another thirty-eight.
Yeah, our road projects. So this is not encapsulated in the, uh, fifty-fifty, uh, road agreement match through the county road commission, which was increased this year from a hundred and ten thousand dollars to roughly a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, this agreement can't be used with a fifty-fifty match, so it'd be outside of, uh, that hundred and thirty. Uh, but that's can be a definite consideration of a secondary treatment as long as we let them know ahead of time for purchasing principles.
Or my, I don't know if to. So makes it any better, you know, we just another thirty thousand maybe to spend again.
I think it's actually.
Contribute to that. They're not contributing to this now. So, but I mean, I I think in under that guise, if that's a a consideration of this board, we should probably let them know, um, in anticipation because I believe that they do purchasing in bulk in the beginning part of the season. Uh, so if our expectation is to have a second dust control, uh, potential, uh, it'd probably be in our best interest to, uh, give a tip of the hat and. I can value that back to Ryan Bregu at the road commission. Trustee Paul.
Maybe instead of considering doubling the cost, maybe we should just scrap it for one year and see what kind of results we get back from the residents, if their thoughts are.
You could also do that, um.
Maybe they're they're saying it's not not holding up.
And, yeah, I mean, it's, you're always dependent, well, anytime you're, you're dependent on mother nature, um, that is a slippery slope.
I think the amount of traffic on a road has a lot to do with it.
There's a lot of variables to it.
I think we need to do it.
I mean. It, we actually know this is a board, so unfortunately, that's, it's not an open floor, but I appreciate birthday boys willingness to.
I'd like to.
So I mean, we we can do it several different ways. Scrap it, move forward with it or ask for what it would look like.
And we can push it down to a table of a month from now because it'd be.
Oh, well, right now, we could, with anticipation that we're probably going to be having a special meeting in the next couple of months or next couple of weeks. Sorry, apologize for that. Um, we could potentially. Table it to our subsequent, uh, special meeting.
And I won't be here in two weeks. You guys do it, Jim.
So, I mean, those are, those are.
Motion on the table.
We have a motion on the table. So if we wanna defeat it, we can do it.
I moved to table.
Um, so we have to undo this.
Well, you could actually just vote against it and then make a motion to table it.
Well, you can do it that way, but you, a table motion is is a priority motion, so it takes best.
Okay, so are you, you made the motion originally?
Did you not?
Norm did.
So. Table's open. If you wanna make a motion to table.
I thought Russ didn't make a motion.
I I did make a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to table.
Did you support it?
Table of that means we have to re- react.
Again, if you just table it without a special or a specific date, it stays on the table till somebody brings it off the table with another motion.
It's postponed. You have to actually.
Okay, so that's how.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
If someone makes motion, then someone makes motion to table it, that table motion. Overrules.
Supercedes. Thank you. That's worth.
Okay, so, okay.
It's a priority.
So you're.
It would be the current counter argument to.
Okay, so who? So now we're to tabling and we have a motion to table. Do we have support to the motion to table?
So.
And I would say, I would add to the motion, Mr. Chairman, since nobody's seconded to. The next special, uh, meeting of this board of any type.
Okay.
Okay. Can I withdraw my?
We now have a a motion that superseded the original motion, so. Don't get three on the table. Right now, I've entertained a motion to support table.
Or the tabling.
Yes, we have a motion to support table. Further discussion. All those in favor and the the motion to be clear is to table into the next subsequent meeting, whether it's special or not, correct?
Correct.
Uh. With that being said, uh, all those in favor of tabling this, uh, item of business to the next subsequent meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. We'll bring this back and I'll I'll reach out to Ryan and look at some, uh, potential secondary options.
It it's, so the original motion died, never happened, right?
Correct.
I don't.
Well, it, yeah, it's not been voted on. It's still there. It's just.
Yeah.
It was, you know, for.
I'm just trying to figure out for my minutes.
It'll be on the. No, it'll be on.
Okay.
Yeah.
It'll still show it. So. That being said, uh, moving forward to the new item, uh, number five, uh, budget adjustments. Some not in your eyes at least. Um.
It's a weird one.
So. It was weird, but it was, uh, it's.
Yeah.
So we have.
It's weird, just I've never.
Uh, so we have before us, uh, year-end, uh, budget adjustments, uh, principally, uh, all three departments, uh, general fund, public safety and water department. Everything's highlighted. There are some things that are on these sheets that are a little bit gray, um, that are. Everything's highlighted. There are some things that are on these sheets that are a little bit gray, um, that are representative of transfers
For our.
From our funds for expenditures. Um, if there's no questions, I've entertained a motion to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
Some.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion. Seeing none, uh, roll call please.
Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, next item of business is, uh, a TA, uh, presented through negotiations and the personnel committee for the FOPLC, uh, union contract. On at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion to ratify the, the tentative agreement presented to this.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to ratify the tentative agreement with the FOPLC bargaining unit.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion.
I'm glad it got over with fast.
Two hours and fifteen minutes. So.
Uh, we.
Uh, so roll call please, but there's no.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, last item of new business, uh, in your packet is, uh, as we've discussed in budget sessions, um, is a way, uh, to set forth by ordinance and by resolution of compensation commission. Now, did you want to add anything to it from a, a legal perspective?
No, just, uh, you've got the materials in your packet and, uh, first, I knew this was going to be an issue was when I looked at the agenda, but, um, I think in the past we've talked about a procedure for a compensation commission, uh, it's by ordinance. I don't know whether you want to have a committee dig in deeper or, or how it came up in the first place, but.
I, I think, uh, going through the budget process over the past seven years, uh, it's always been, uh, something and we finally are
Every year.
Talking about it and at this point in time, let's just.
So, I just want to be clear in my head, Tim. So we would have to, um, introduce an ordinance and then approve an ordinance to do this. So I guess I, why wouldn't we just start working on the ordinance?
Yeah, I'm, we could make a motion to move forward with, uh, allowing the supervisor with legal counsel to move forward with an ordinance creation.
Okay, I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
Okay, okay. We have a motion on the table. Is there support? I'll support it. I'll let it, birthday boy have it.
Such question.
Yeah.
So I guess, I guess I understand like why we do a resolution, but why would we do an ordinance?
Because it's state statutes, Michigan compiled law.
The law says we have to have an ordinance. It just seems strange. Yeah, I, I, I mean, I don't write the laws.
Detailed, it talks about the makeup of the commission and timetable and, yeah, so that's all spelled out in the ordinance.
I think everybody should read this carefully.
Yeah.
So we know when we come back to vote on it, you know.
Most definitely. So we have a motion and support, uh, roll call. If there's no further discussion.
Okay, seeing none. Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Clerk Flavich, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers, yes. Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, this is the second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment, please stand at the podium, uh, and state your.
Is North Point Shore is on.
North Point, we have pulled from the agenda, we amended the agenda.
Okay.
Uh, Mike Schmansky, so, nine seven five, Green Haven Lake, open it up.
Don't need, don't need your address anymore, all may change.
Don't want anybody to come, well, they pay for my mailbox with them. Well, the only thing I I hope the fire department problem with board members maybe not getting along and you had a opportunity and I never got an answer really of with the city contract that you had negotiated with a kind of a professional in the field. Thought it was a good deal for the Alpine Township. The board had disagreements on that, but could the board put out a budget that shows how much what your contract was actually covering with the couple firefighters at each station? How much does it cost the township to do that on a standalone? Could we do it cheaper than what they were gonna? We were contracting it out for. And if we can't do it cheaper than what the city contract was, we all members automatically know we can't stay within our villages. So that was a question you can't quite get out of the financial part in the paper of how much it costs to actually, if your department went down demanding stations to people at each one, as I understood the city contract. I don't know, stating it right, but I don't want the fire department to turn into the water litigation that goes on and on, on and costs everybody quite a bit of money. So that's all I would thank you for kind of trying to get that out. What our budget is and what we can afford. We got two villages turned down. So I don't know if that was a hint and did we try and go back to the city and actually see what that contract, same paperwork would what they would be willing to partner with us? Cause I took that as kind of a partnership. What we were, what you would like to do, uh, authority, but you know, you start somewhere and you see where it goes. No, thanks for listening. I don't know if I explained it right. Any questions of what I said? Cause I don't know if I said it right.
No, uh, public comment is just for your comments, sir.
Feedback. Okay, thank you.
Oh, okay, okay. My comments. I am still here before. I guess, uh, I share some frustration. I see a lot of wheels spinning. I mean, where even this meeting here. We look back here, how much progress have we made? You've had two failed millages. You've got there was supposed to be some sort of a, uh, a proposed plan of the first one to fail. There was no plan. The city has a plan apparently, from what I've heard, whatever in the paper, the city has a plan, okay? I'm frustrated because, uh, we're at the point now where you're going to get emergency service consultation. If you aren't going to include the city in this, if you aren't going to make this an all encompassing thing, which it should be, it should be long range. Are you going to include the city in this long range plan? Because if you aren't, then we're right back to square one again. I like, it doesn't make sense to me. You know, we've got the high school in the city, we have the junior high in the township. And I'm not sure where we stand now with the emergency services with the, uh, I'm assuming from what I've heard here that now if I need, uh, ambulance service, it's going to come from the city. Is that correct?
Again, sir, this is public comment.
Okay, I'm assuming it's coming from the city. Uh, as the, and then I have to ask the other question is, uh, normally when an ambulance comes, there's usually another company vehicle. Is that going to come from the city? And I don't know this, you know, you, I'm, I'm making these comments now and I'm not getting a response because I'm not supposed to. But basically, I'm frustrated. The, the spinning of the wheels, the spinning of the wheels, that's, it's just like you've gone nowhere with this in a la, you mustn't say within the last year. And if you are going to hire emergency service consultation, I think if you, you've got to consider this long range. It should include the city of Alpine Department. Because if you don't include the city of Alpine Department, then you're missing the boat. I think we've had this, this thing has gone on and on. If we have one side of Grant Street, Hobbs Drive is a city. The other side of Hobbs Drive is a township. So, uh, emergency situation where I live, you know, the, the, uh, services I could get from the city are, and I know where Norm lives and so on and so forth. There's a lot of people in between us. And I think our services could be better provided by the city, both fire and emergency and, and ambulance. But right, what I see right now is just a lot of wheels spinning. You're going back to emergency service kind of consultation. There is.
Your, your time is now.
I'm up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Kimshaw.
Okay.
Hello again. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board. It's good to see you, everybody. Been a while since I've been here. Um, I was watching the last budget meeting on YouTube and I want to thank you first of all, uh, for the five thousand dollars for South Bay for the appropriation for next year for grant writing. And, uh, we really appreciate that. I thought it might be helpful after reviewing that, um, cause I hadn't been with you for quite a while to kind of give you an update on where we are. Uh, over the last year and a half, there have been a lot of meetings between Nathan, uh, Russ and I to discuss the bike path extension running from Island Drive to South Partridge Point Road. It, really the results of that, I can focus on a few key areas or the, the key discussion points, if you will. Uh, first of all, the design plan has been completed by RS Scott. Uh, and, uh, had contingency approval based on securing funding from Eagle. It calls for a um, one point one mile bike path through, uh, one hundred feet of right away between the center line of US twenty-three south. And, um, basically we would be ending it, um, before it crosses into the power company easement. So we'd be going, uh, in the following areas with that is the proposal from Island Drive south to across from Pole Road. Of course, there's a few, quite a few houses in there. And the plan calls for the, uh, the bike path to be adjacent basically to the drainage ditch along the edge of the yards there. And, uh, we would be supplying trees as requested by homeowners. Uh, also, the bike path would be ten feet wide, the path itself uh, with two foot shoulders and three foot slopes. Uh, we did find a way to weave it around, um, in that constraint to what I just mentioned. So there'll only be a point three oh acre, uh, wetland impact, though very minimal. Uh, the remainder of the path from across from Pole Road to South Partridge Point Road would be going along the, again, the drainage ditches on you on the east side of twenty-three mainly and the tree. So not as many trees impacted in that area, although a few. The other thing is, or maintenance costs, there's quite a bit of discussion about that. The maintenance costs, uh, would be minimal on this. Uh, the, I, it's an extensive conversation. It's actually with TART, which is a, uh, Traverse area regional transit authority, uh, Director Chris Cushmanore. Also talked to Steve Schultz from Engineering Department from the city of Alpine, of course, and, uh, Burt Lake Township and Roger City. And they gave me the, uh, cost kind of boiled down to the following. Whereas a five foot, uh, five hundred feet of boardwalk would.
And you, that's, that means you're the lucky winner.
Oh, great, where do we win?
Yes. Now we'll be, uh, continuing, I, I believe, uh, you're calling your first board meeting soon and we'll continue those discussions to bring back to this board.
Okay, do you want to hear the, can I get an extension on my time or would you rather I come back?
Do you have just a little bit more in your presentation?
Okay, I'll speed it up.
I'll vote additional just one minute.
Okay, whereas this is an important point here about the maintenance costs. We've all talked about this. The asphalt, they feel the cost would be minimal. Uh, and the township spends anywhere from a hundred fifty to four hundred dollars a year on average, except for last year when there was seal code done on asphalt maintenance for the bike path. And the design and construction costs, I'm working on here on engineering, uh, to get a second opinion, which we, uh, want to do all along on what RS Scott has proposed. And support and closing, uh, with support levels, we've raised a hundred and thirty, thirty-four thousand years to date, uh, on our various projects in South Bay. Uh, we still have fifty-eight thousand dollars in cash and receivables. Uh, we need to build on that in addition to your donation. And then finally, I think Russ mentioned in this meeting that we had a public input session on September twenty-fifth. It was announced by the media. So there was a lot of pub, there was nine attendees. Uh, most of the comments were positive, centering around health and wellness and, um, is the eliminating bicycle traffic issues on twenty-three. So my second warning, so thank you very much.
Very much for your comments, Mr. Clark. Sir. Other than name Burke Francisco, what information does the board require?
That is it.
Okay, Burke Francisco.
Um, with respect to the decision on fire services for Alpine Township. Heard a number of your discussions. Um, my recommendation is to, um, sit down and develop courses of action, courses of action that will allow you to provide emergency services, obviously though, within the constraints that are you are given. Uh, you two millages that, that the public decided they were not going to provide additional funding. Um, whether you go back a third time or not, certainly the bird's board's prerogative. But right now you need to develop courses of action, whether it's a full-time force that's, uh, pared down from what it was, whether it's a paid-on call, two courses of action, and you can put other heads together to develop other courses of action to provide the services, albeit limited maybe, or most likely, uh, within the constraints that you have. And obviously those constraints are fiscal. Um, and as far as consultants, paid consultants, whether you go through, uh, some online service or whatever. I mean, there are some people locally that you could reach out to. Retired Chief Ford Bush, retired Deputy Chief Bob Adrian, former chair of the Alpine County. Uh, obviously he has a lot of experience in that as well. Uh, uh, former chief Dave Robbins possibly, and you could reach out to him. They all have experience in that area and maybe, just maybe, they would be willing to come in and provide their background. Again, they are providing courses of action, developing hopefully, and Chief Hanson, of course, currently, and, and anybody else that has that kind of experience without paying money for a mediator, facilitator, consultant, whatever, maybe look at that option, uh, first to see if they can develop those courses of action within those constraints for the board to consider. Thank you for your time and I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for your service. And what you do, whether you do it full-time as an elected official or as a part-time trustee, um, I'm finding out that these kind of positions aren't always, uh, you're not endearing yourself to the community. They are difficult, very difficult to do, and I admire reaching every one of you for being willing to do so. So thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, uh, discussion amongst the board.
I just want to say one thing. I've heard numerous times that the city could do it better. And I disagree with that comment because in the last eighteen months, I've had a family member where we have had a call of nine-one-one and have emergency medical services come to the home on Princeton, which you cannot get any closer to the city limit than living on Princeton. And every single time Alpine Township Fire Department was there first. Sometimes minutes before the city got there. So that's, I just want to make, I appreciate some of the guys that are out here today have been there and I appreciate it and they were very fast.
Any other discussion for the good of the order? Not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on the table to adjourn. Was there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah.
Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-eight PM. Thank you.